I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Baraboo to order from Monday, April the 28th, 2014 with roll call. Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McNeven.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
And Bodak here. Continue to pledge. The flag is behind the counter. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Entertaining motion for the approval of the minutes of the April the 14th, reading and printed.
I approve. Sorry, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Riley. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes thus approved. Bring us to the portion of the agenda for the both of office. And we're trying to make it simple tonight. We have three board members that were re-elected. So if I can have all three of you come down towards this end, we'll do all three together. Because Mr. Cummings is the clerk, and normally this would be his responsibility and duty, I'll stand in for him tonight. Aye, say your name.
Peter Bedrow.
Mary Cummings.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Board of Education of the School District of Baraboo.
Having been elected to the Office of the Board of Education of the School District of Baraboo.
Swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. You've got different words in mind.
This is the one we have to sign in blood, Gary, so it doesn't matter what he says.
Mine was in Russian. Bring us to E., portion of the agenda entitled "Election of Officers." We have a slate of officers, president, vice-president, or clerk, and/or treasurer. Nominations for any and all.
I nominate the current slate.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Congratulations to those officers. I would also note that the board recorder position, which we should address as well as part of the officers' election, I would suggest that the board nominate Mary Howard for the duration of her stint.
Oh, I'm sorry. You could do this in her spirit.
Which would be June the 30th. And then I would also suggest at this time that the board affirm our new board recorder. What, do you have something to say? Ellen Wyland.
June 30th is the end of the year.
No.
Just the first one.
I have moved to approve all the recorders.
Second.
Any discussion further? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
It was a tough campaign.
Yeah.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled "Correspondence," of which I have none. Administrative correspondence. Board has presented several items from Dr. Ritz and Fowler. Anything to add?
Can I just highlight those?
Absolutely.
People that are here. The first piece was a piece from Jake Bull and the high school forensic students. They were in the top 5% of the competing schools to earn the Excellence in Speech Award. I don't know if we've ever done that before, but that's noteworthy recognition. Jay McMahon and Rita Ailer presented to education students at UW-Plattville, and there was communication on their website regarding that. Rita was also selected to serve on statewide language arts work group and received notification from DPI. Also, I said today, I don't know if all of you received it or not, we had our top scholars' banquet. Used to be called Top Ten. I hate saying that, but it's top scholars from all the Badger Conference, and that was held at Chulavista, and I sent a list of the students' names. Mo, Riley's daughter, was one of the recipients. They represented the Baraboo School District well. And then we received communication from the National Association for Gifted Children, and they are pleased to inform us that two of our proposals were accepted from nearly 900 submissions across the country. And we have staff who will be presenting at the 61st Annual Convention in Baltimore in Maryland. And then finally, received a correspondence from Jocelyn Fish. She's an AmeriCorps Vista member for Habitat of Humanity for Sauk County. And on April 12th, she contacted Greg Manson, and the FBLA students participated in the Free East Cycle event. She goes on to talk about the young adults going above and beyond what was expected, and I guess it was kind of a rainy nasty day, but there were no complaints, and they really pitched in to help with that community event. So that's the correspondence that I have.
Any other administrative correspondence? Hearing none. We have the portion of the agenda entitled "Public Viewpoints." Do we have anyone here for public viewpoints tonight? So you approach the microphone and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Sue Ritz, and I'm the family consumer science teacher at middle school. I come before you tonight with a mix of emotions. I am angered that a program that has been in existence for over 30 years might not be available to Baraboo High School students next year because of a budget deficit. Yet new positions are being created in the district. Release time is being granted to some teachers on a pretty consistent basis, and certain monies are being funneled into specific areas. I am disappointed that this whole retirement and hiring process has not been a collaborative effort between administration and the FCS department. Yet I feel that our positions are not valued. Between the four FCS teachers, we have over 85 years invested in this district, yet I feel that our positions are not valued by some administrators. Although I've been, or I've felt anger and disappointment, I can also tell you that I've experienced a sense of happiness. The happiness stems from the fact that I've gotten to know my colleagues on a different level. It is with their support I feel confident in what I'm equipped to do. Because I believe the food service program that Kate has established is so important to our students, I feel that I need to do everything that I can to do to save it. I realize that a few interviews took place today, and the job has been reposted as part-time. Will someone who is qualified want part-time if later on a full-time position opens elsewhere? And it's been suggested that being off-site is not ideal for an inexperienced teacher. So I want you to know that Kate, Claire, Dawn, and myself have thrown out some ideas to the administrative team to consider. Sorry. Could we possibly make the position full-time by reducing overloads? Another idea I suggested was that I teach a section of food service to the most interested students during first block at the Civic Center. At this point, I have my vocational certification, which was necessary when I began teaching back in 1993 in Oshkosh. At that time, my responsibility was to teach home economics-related occupations to juniors and seniors. As a part of this class, I also supervise students in work-related situations, many of which were food service-related jobs. Over the summer, I would need to obtain my food service certificate. I've been in contact with the FCS consultant at DPI, and I am confident that I can obtain my certificate within the next six months by working with the businesses and individuals that the FCS department has built partnerships with through the years. While my passion is teaching middle school students, I also believe that we need to teach the whole child. We need to teach academics, but we also need to give all students the opportunity to explore and discover what their interests and talents might be. During the past few weeks, I've been upset because an opportunity for students interested in the food service industry might be taken away at the high school level. Well, 52% of last year's graduates reported they intended to enter a four-year college. 20% reported being vocational college bound. Of these students, I wonder how many of them got jobs working in the food industry to help pay college expenses? While not everyone works in the food service industry, haven't we all had the experience of going to a restaurant or a social gathering, or even hosting a gathering of our own where knowledge of furnishing, plating, and menu selection has made an impression, whether good or bad? As a district, we need to recognize partnerships that have existed for more than 30 years between Kate's program and the community. Have you considered the possibility that the Civic Center space might not exist a year from now, or do you plan to have someone pay the rent for a year on an unoccupied space? Have you considered what will happen with all the equipment that was provided by Cisco? Have you considered the safety and sanitation of storing food equipment for a year? Please don't use the budget deficit or lack of experienced applicants as reasons to cut such a valuable program that draws minimal link from the district, if even for a year. Please remember that my passion is teaching middle school students. So until recently, I wouldn't have even considered going back to teaching high school students. I know that becoming, or by coming before you tonight, I'm taking a risk that might affect my future in more than one way. I'm ready to take that risk. It is my hope that you will ask questions of the FCS teachers, administrators, and our community partners. It is my hope that you will take a tour of the food service classroom as they are preparing for the next fundraiser. It is my hope that you will share in the dreams of those students who want to be the next greatest chefs or bakers, or simply the best dinner host or hostess our country has ever seen.
I'd like to respond to Sue. Could have probably avoided that this, tonight, if you had communicated with us. We had base teachers involved in interviews today, and members of the department, and although we don't have a recommendation for tonight's meeting, we are hopeful we're going to have one at the next meeting on May 5th. We did find a very interested, very qualified, experienced candidate, and so we're hopeful that at the next meeting, the board will be acting on hiring that candidate.
And I'd love to respond to you. Sure. Okay. What I find really disheartening is that somebody like Dawn has been in our department for years, and yet she was never included in on the interview committees, was never asked. The fact that she has worked with Kate for how many years probably knows the program better than the people that sat on the interview committee, and yet she wasn't asked to be on the committee. Lack of respect for somebody that has spent 30-some years devoting her career to...
Well, I don't want to get into it back and forth there.
I know.
But we had the department chair, and then we also had the other food service teacher involved in that.
But I just want...
Let's visit later about that. Thank you.
Sue, Sue, I just, forgive me. I just want to, as an individual board member, but I do, I speak for several.
Pete, Peter.
Yes.
I'd ask that you hold your comments, because the public viewpoint section of the agenda is not for board interaction. Certainly can listen, can follow up later if you wish, but please don't get into a conversation because it's not for the agenda item. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Hearing none, I'd like to move on to the portion of the agenda entitled "Students and Staff Recognition." We have with us tonight Special Education Assistance Jennifer Severson and Julia. Close.
Yeah. Close.
Mike can help us with this.
Just like it's written.
Are they here?
Well, she is.
Do you want to start, John?
Oh, yeah. I got to talk before he takes over. Scary, isn't it? Danny Scott called me about my conversation, and said, hey, pick him up. We'd like to recognize you at one of our school board meetings, one of our special assistance, some of our specialist assistants. What do you think? She goes, I was kind of thinking of Jennifer Severson. And Danny's had worked with Jennifer this year, and there's some things that have happened, and it was a definite yes. Jennifer's been with us, or has been with us now for four years, I believe, and has worked on one of our more challenging students over the years, and this year especially. One of those students has had a real tough year, and she has been kicked, hit, spelt, slapped, anything else that you can think of. Still has always been professional, kept a clear head, has kept students safe, has kept students around, has students safe, putting herself ahead of that student on a daily basis. Now, some people might think she's crazy that she keeps coming back to work with a positive attitude, but it just shows her commitment and dedication, not just to that student, but to all the students, because she does help out in other places too, to the staff, and she's pretty much dedicated her life to supporting students who have physical, emotional, or social needs. And she has done the stuff that she does outside of school where she supports kids, and so it's just, she's a pretty remarkable person. We're very fortunate to have her at A and have her at B.
Julia is right back here, and Julia works here at the high school, and, you know, if you were trying to design the perfect paraprofessional support staff person, you would really design it around Julia, because when you're looking for people to step into these roles, they're really challenging, and you're asked to do so many things. And she's able to step into any classroom and work with students in difficult content areas like math and science. She's incredibly sensitive to all student needs and working with all types of learners, and has this culturally responsive kind of approach about her when it comes to recognizing all the different places that our students are coming from and what they need in order to really support them. And she really works extremely well, too, with the staff. And I know Vicki is here, and Vicki is the person that probably knows her better than anybody in the building when it comes to one of our teachers, and they're closely united in terms of, you know, being able to help each other out, and Julia is just one of those people who never stops working and is always looking to fill in the holes wherever they might be during the course of the school day. So those are a few things about Julia, but I know there's a lot more, and we really appreciate her, and I think anybody who has worked with her for just a little while recognizes that immediately. So, thank you, Julia.
Danny Scott actually nominated both of you for the recognitions tonight. She couldn't be here tonight, so I think it's close to chime in and talking about some of your strengths and abilities, and I think we would all agree, anybody who's been in the school building, you have the toughest, one of the toughest jobs there are in our district, and probably the most under-recognized and acknowledged and appreciated, so we're happy to take this time tonight on behalf of the board of the district to thank you for your contributions. Thank you.
So each of the board members should have a three-page packet that looks like this on the front. We'll use that tonight. First, I wanted to review our 2013-14 financial position. If you recall, back on January 27th, and you have that memo as the second page, as well as the appendix to that, we talked about where we might end up at the end of this year. At that point in time, it looked like we were going to use about $720,000 of fund balance. And if you recall, that was due to the transfer to special education that was underestimated at that point in time. We've reviewed the financials almost through the end of April here, and it looks like we're going to be able to reduce that use of fund balance down to about $520,000. A big majority of that is coming from our transportation budget, through some route reductions, snow days that didn't have to have transportation on them. We believe we'll actually be able to reduce that budget by $140,000 by the end of the year. So if you look on the front page then of that packet, in the middle column highlighted in yellow, our new projected use of fund balance is about $520,000. So then moving on to the 2014-15 budget, which is also on that first page in the right column. If you recall at the last meeting, the board had approved for us to move ahead with projecting the 14-15 budget based on that lengthy list of reductions, reallocations, and a few additions. So those have been accounted for in this paper in front of you. At the moment, we're looking at a balanced budget with about $69,000 of revenues over expenditures. Want to make sure everyone knows that's not a final number yet. The biggest piece of the budget, which is salaries and benefits, which we've been projecting in aggregate, we need to go in and put in those finite details into the budget and come up with a more complete and accurate number for the 14-15 budget. If you recall, there was a 1.46% increase overall to salaries that you told us to go ahead and put in the budget and see where it came out. 1.46 is what the Consumer Price Index is, so that's how we came up with that number. And also recall that we are aiming for a 0% increase in total insurance premiums as well. So we're going to continue to work on the budget over the next month. I would bring back something on May 19th, which would have the salaries and benefits in it, as well as any other changes that might happen over the next few weeks. Based on that list that you looked at at the last board meeting, we think we might be able to reduce that number of the Fund 27 transfer increase that we had originally thought we might have to see. And we are working on some grants, and I say we loosely, it's not me, but there's some people around the table involved in some grant writing that may be able to pay for some of the additional equipment that was on that budget document you looked at last board meeting. So really, the big part, again, is the salaries and benefits that we have to plug in line by line, and make sure we're getting more and more accurate every time we send a budget projection to you. And again, I hope to do that on May 19th, the second meeting of May. Are there any questions about the numbers that you see before you, or...
We are, again, when would referendum dollars, again, it's not showing up on here.
No.
When would that show up? The next year?
Nope. The mill levy will go out with the 14-15 budget, but this is only Fund 10, and so the referendum does not affect Fund 10 as far as the mill levy.
Okay, so this budget is for Fund 10.
Fund 10, yes. Yep.
I think I was one sure, because it doesn't show it at the bottom.
Yep. So, yeah, I didn't fill those in yet. A couple other recent changes are, we just went through our membership audit, and we actually came out with more FTE in summer school than we had originally submitted to the DPI, so I have included that in our revenue calculation. So we originally only had 24 FTE, and now this is based on 30 FTE.
So the numbers are higher as a result?
The revenue budget is higher from what I showed it to you last time.
That's like anything else, or anything, it's a three-year plan.
Yes, and we, this, we're entering our third year.
So we're finally getting some of a kick in from the first.
Yes.
And page three is the one, first that we looked at in January.
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
So as a comparison, the total tax rate does not include the interest on the referendum.
Nothing with the referendum is on this page at all. The rate that we had been talking about all along leading up to the referendum did include interest, so it won't surprise anyone when it comes on the tax bill.
Any further questions? Thank you. Look forward to an update on the next one. Brings us to continuous, let's move to the list, and we have a number of administrators that are going to share some information in regards to conferences that were attended. Who is going to do that first to make that list?
Dawn's going to start.
I assume it's the names that are up on the projected screen.
Can you repeat?
I promise to keep my comments brief, because I can talk about this kind of stuff all night. I'm really passionate about the learning piece. It's Twitter. I might do that. I'm talking about that. Well, when I crossed over into the dark side and went into administration, there was a lot of things I didn't know, and I realized that right away. And the first thing I realized I didn't know, is I didn't know what I didn't know. There's only one way to learn that. But I believe that there's a responsibility on our parts to continue to learn, particularly if we're being asked to be instructional leaders in our school buildings and across the district. We have to model that commitment to lifelong learning. And one of the things that we do that, or one of the ways that we do that, is by attending conferences and increasing our knowledge and participating in Twitter chats and all of those things that increase our own learning. So these are some of the reasons, and I don't have to read through each one of them, but I would say that they're all significant reasons why we have to continuously be committed to ongoing learning for adults, so that we can increase the capacity to teach and learn for teaching staffs and for our students. And I think it's important to keep rolling, so. Now, in order to best lead our staff and increase leadership capacity across the district, principals have to dedicate themselves to continuing learning and growing. And when I went to the national conference out in Los Angeles, two of the people I had the opportunity to see are people who had a dramatic impact on me as I continued to develop as a leader, Todd Whitaker and Michael Fulton. And one of the advantages of attending a national conference is you get a one-stop-shopping place where you're going to see speakers and presenters that, you know, if you saw them individually, you know, you'd spend a lot of money at lots of different conferences getting that kind of knowledge, and you have it all in one place. And if we expect to have a meaningful impact on instructional practice, we have to be the lead learners in our buildings as principals. Now, one of the focuses when I go to a conference is responding to what the data in my building is telling me. And a couple of these here, these books and things that I've shared on this slide, are things that I think about when I think about what is the data telling me in my building. One of the presentations I went to was on engaging students with poverty in mind by Eric Jensen. Okay? That's an issue in our district, the increasing number of students who come to us in poverty, and how do we as educators tackle that issue? My staff needs leadership in that area. We need leadership across the district. The only way to get that is to continue to learn and grow and seek out that knowledge. Same thing with building academic language, that's been a major focus at the middle school this year. When I got into administration, I spent 16 years as a social studies teacher. I wasn't an expert on what program works best in middle school math, or what literacy strategies to use. That's the learning curve I inherited, and that's how I have to continue to grow as a leader, so that I can increase my knowledge base in all of those important areas that affect our students at the middle school that I'm not an expert in. I have a lot of learning to do. I also wanted to deal with some of the things that our building is wrestling with, such as grading practices, which is a huge issue at the middle school. I need to increase my knowledge so that I can communicate effectively to both my staff, to students, to parents in regard to changing practices in terms of grading. The essential questions deals with one of my instructional priorities. If I'm going to give my staff leadership in that area, I need to know some things about them in order to do it. Same thing with Common Core standards. You know, these are all huge issues in education that are not unique to Baraboo, but certainly require a lot of learning on my part. National conferences gives us the opportunity to get a glimpse into the future of education. The issues that we're wrestling with now are not unique to Baraboo. They're part of a larger conversation, a national conversation, and we owe it to our kids to prepare them for the world in which they will learn and earn. We talk a lot in education, we use a lot of buzz phrases, but we really have to understand that the world of education, the world of economics, is changing incredibly, and we cannot wait, because we owe our kids to prepare them for the world in which they will live, not the world in which I was raised. And the world is changing dramatically, and we have to prepare our kids for that.
Yeah, so I'm just going to add on to, John, you know, from a district leadership perspective. When I think about attending a national conference, I have a lot of excitement and I have a lot of passion for that opportunity. So I thank the board and the community for supporting us and those efforts. If you see my bedroom, I have a whole wall like that of educational research books. Alongside of my bed, I have another pile, and every time I go to my parents in Florida, I'm reading it on the beach. So when we go to a national conference, it's, for me, it's like a rock concert, because it's an opportunity in three days to see everybody that I read and I have done research and all of my professional background. and all of my, my professional background. So for me, it's an exciting time to have access to those people that mean the most to me when we think about what is research-based and best practice. It's an opportunity to engage with them face-to-face. It's really exciting if Bob Marzano knows your name, you know, and to engage with them about things that are really specific to our context. It's also having access to people across the country to hear what they're doing in their districts and to learn from each other, and also to validate some of the struggles that we might be having and learn from others how they have broke down some barriers and moved forward. And also, it's having access to my own peers when we're at a conference too, to collaborate as we're learning from these researchers about what's best practice, what is that going to look like in the Bearable school district? So I'm just going to highlight a few things that had the biggest impact on me. And I too, like John, am a follower of Michael Fulon, who's the big leader on reform and how do you, how do leaders in buildings and districts take on some significant reform or change? And he works with different countries on this. And we saw a presentation where he talked about right drivers versus wrong drivers. And what this slide is about, every country across this world is trying to close the gap for kids and to improve student achievement, and there are certain things that our government partakes, or certain boards might partake in, that are the wrong drivers for closing the gap or to raise student achievement. So this is based on his research, and so he identifies wrong drivers as accountability, so think about where the United States is right now. Individual teacher and leadership quality, and I'll talk about why in a second, technology and fragmented strategies. So he said really the right drivers for leadership to focus on to improve student gains is building capacity. So when I think about what we've been doing here in our district with building teacher leadership capacity, that's the right work to be doing, versus holding our teachers accountable for every little thing that they do. Collaborative work over individual teachers, so in other words, supporting our teachers to work together and they're not competing against each other, you know, and that's what we do sometimes when we reward individual teacher leadership quality, but we want to build collaborative work, so I think about the work we are doing across the district with our professional learning communities. He says technology is great, but it's not the driver to spend all your time on improving student achievement. It's a tool. Really, it's the instruction behind the technology that we need to focus on. So he describes technology as a distraction. And then fragmented strategies versus systemness. And so I think about our visual that we have for our continuous school improvement and how we try to connect and align everything. Our strategic plan has given us a systems view of all the things that we're doing, and obviously, the more we can narrow our focus on change initiatives in the district, the better, so that we don't feel fragmented. So it's really powerful session, I just summarize in a few minutes, that has a lot of impact on, when I think about the vision of the district. We also had an opportunity to have a chat with Charlotte Danielson, and this is just a quote that I really loved that she shared that day from Lee Shulman. I'll read it for the audience. "After 30 years of doing such work, I have concluded that classroom teaching is perhaps the most complex, most challenging, and most demanding subtle nuance and frightening activity that our species has ever invented. The only time a physician could possibly encounter a situation of comparable complexity would be in the emergency room of a hospital during or after a natural disaster." And so the purpose of her presentation that day was to talk about how complex teaching is, and with the whole country focused on accountability and educator, you know, evaluation or our state educator effectiveness, she talked about using her framework for teaching as a framework for professional growth and not holding teachers accountable. The other thing that was really exciting, see how it's like a rock concert, everybody's got their phones out, taking pictures. She shared this slide that, she's not really sharing any, we can't have access to it other than taking a picture at this point, but she's showing how the Common Core State Standards are aligned to her framework for teaching. And some of the work she's doing right now with grant, with a grant, is that she's trying to develop content-specific tools to give teachers feedback on the Common Core State Standards that's aligned to her framework. So we're really excited about that work, and that's going to, that's really going to help drive our instruction. Kathy Sheik, she knows what I'm talking about. The other thing I like about listening to some of our researchers talk is it's a reminder of some of the strategies that we need to be focused on. And we saw this slide from Bob Marzano, and he's talking about how high schools across the country are going to a four-point system, and what does standards reference grading look like? And so when this slide went up, I know John and I looked at each other and were like, yes, that's, we're headed in the right direction with what we're doing with our grading practices. So having access to those researchers to talk about strategic actions to take with our grading best practices was something that we spent a lot of time talking and collaborating about.
Like John said, initially, it's all about responding to data. We're so lucky in Bearable that we have so much data to rely on. We have our assessment windows, which kind of tells us exactly where is the area of focus that needs to happen in our building. And I know that my GLW is literacy, and literacy is an area that I need to focus on. So I just chose just a few things to share with you guys that is just a sliver of what I learned while I was out at this national conference. And one thing I wanted to focus on was Fisher and Frye, and they have literacy for life. And if I honed it really specifically though, there's a strategy that I, that we talked about when we were there, it's called close reading. And this is traditionally a secondary, post-secondary approach that we're finding may have benefits at the elementary level, specifically in an area that could benefit GLW and actually elementary schools across Bearable. And what it is, is when we think about us teaching reading at the elementary level, and we focus on lens, phonemic awareness, basically teaching kids how to read, we're getting some kids though that are at such a high capacity, we need to really focus on teaching them to think critically about text. So this is, this strategy, they talk about looking at a piece of text, whether it's a, maybe a chapter book, you just choose out a paragraph, or you specifically give them a sheet with a piece of text on it, and you read it, and then you read it again with a different lens, and you read it again with a different lens, and you read it again with a different lens, trying to get students to essentially be able to do all of this at once, and train them to think critically about reading. This is something that, yeah, I would have loved to come back to my teachers and say, hey, we're going to do this, we're going to do it right now. But they didn't see the fancy speaker with the fancy PowerPoint and the music that went with it, so what we're doing right now is we're taking, you know, some of our coaches, we've had discussions about this, and they're starting to implement in their classrooms right now. And they've had some, they've had some great success with it, and then I'm already excited about next year, because we can roll it out, we can start saying, hey, through the things that we're implementing, maybe you can try this, or maybe come and do an instructional round and observe a teacher doing this. So that's just one strategy that I found out, you know, it was just a fraction of what I took. Todd Whitaker, this is one of my highlights when I was out there. Todd Whitaker is just phenomenal. He's written, I would think, over 30 books, and he's a motivational speaker, he's been a superintendent, he's been a principal. He has some just really concrete, great ideas that he shares with principals and teachers that gets them excited about going into their job the next day. And so I've been reading this book right here, it's called What Great Principals Do Differently. It has me excited after I read a chapter, going back and teaching, teaching, or going back and, I call it teaching the teachers and teaching, you know, the students the next day. I've also been reading this book by Todd, recently, the 10-Minute In-N-G service, specifically geared at strategies to increase teacher effectiveness, getting them excited about collaborating, and going back and implementing some of those strategies the next day. And we have eight teachers in my building right now signed up to do a summer book study for What Great Teachers Do Differently, and we're going to all collaborate on that this summer. So just some really neat, neat things. As you can see, I'm trying to grow my library as Lori is. I was really upset last night, I was reading another Todd Whitaker book that I just bought, and I was going through it, and I left it on my bed, and my dog tried to talk. I should keep a cover on that one, it goes in my stash. But ultimately, it goes beyond just being there for a few days. One thing I can connect with most of these people on Twitter, I think, you know, I can have chats with them over the weekends or at nights, and my wife is usually sleeping and I'm on Twitter, just looking at the new posts that they put on there and trying to learn.
You know, I can concur with some of the things my colleagues here have said, you know, it was certainly motivating to be at a national convention, having the collaborative time. What, did I spell a word wrong?
Nope.
Yes. No, we're fine. To have some time to collaborate with our peers, you know, it is exciting when you hear snippets and bits and pieces, and you're like, oh, we've started that in Bearable, or we've talked about that. So some of the highlights from my adventure was, you know, the whole system changed, and I believe Fulon came forward and shared some of this with us. You know, to believe in our staff, I think we've really done a great job in Bearable in that. We've pulled them together, we're doing amazing things, we're moving rather quickly. You know, we have a lot of capacity that we're building. We have leadership home within, which I think Lori referenced in her chart. You know, we're developing that capacity, we're finding different leaders, people that are finding interests and expertise in different levels or areas, and they're coming forward and sharing their passions with us within the school building. Taking a look at the three, four components in order for a group to move forward, whether we're looking at the school district of Bearable, one of our buildings, or our entire elementary force, secondary force, looking at the change knowledge, helping us to understand what we need to do next in order to move forward, looking at the culture of learning, and of course, the learning and teaching piece is fundamental. Fisher and Frye, I think Nick touched on that too. You know, looking at the focused instruction, establishing the purpose of the lesson, we've all been motivated and excited about the transformations that we're seeing in education, which were much different every year from when I went to school than how the teachers are teaching now and how the students are learning. Modeling, demonstrating, using relevant materials and texts like Nick mentioned with the close reading, you know, that seems to be something that our kids are grasping, I do, some of our educator leaders are excited about. The collaborative piece, I think we also talked about, guiding instruction, looking again, I think one of my colleagues here mentioned about the question, John, I agree, looking at robust questions, helping our kids to get to that level where they can analyze and synthesize. Again, looking at close reading, which is just one type Nick mentioned. And the most exciting thing that I kind of had a revelation about while we were there was taking a look at the gradual release of responsibility, and I know our elementary students are able to do that, and that's been a complete shift from certainly maybe the last 10 years, where we have a teacher doing it, I do it for the kids, then we all do it together, then you do it together with your peers, and then eventually you're doing it as a student alone. And I think we're finding that through the national research and the Bearable research here in Bearable, that these students are making good improvements and are able to do that. So I appreciate the board's support on allowing us to participate in these things.
Okay, if you guys want to Los Angeles, I have to have the opportunity to travel to Dallas. And the focus of the Conference of Ireland too was more on building instruction and coming up with quality instruction activities. And the first one that caught my eye was something by Sean King called Fundamental of Five. And there's five things that teachers can do right now in every classroom to improve instruction without having to reinvent the wheel. First one is to frame the lesson. We're doing that already with our learning targets. We're identifying what our purpose of our lesson is. And the other part of that is what the kid is going to, we are asking the student to do before they leave our classroom. So we're putting a frame together so that they know what they're going to. Teaching in the power zone, teaching in the power zone, or working in the power zone is quite simply having an instructor get inside where the students are, so that we can pay attention to what these two are doing while we're also focusing on this. It knocks down the discipline issues. It also allows teachers to have the ability to redirect, help give some supplemental instruction where kids are struggling, call a timeout, get the kids stopped, and re-instruct the entire group based on that. Another fundamental is to recognize and reinforce. And when we're recognizing and reinforcing, we're looking for, recognizing that not all kids come at the same place on the same day at any given time. They have baggage, they have learning difficulties, they have trouble with their girlfriend, you know, teachers have to recognize that, and then they have to reinforce any of the small efforts that the students are making. Another, the fourth fundamental is to have frequent small group push, purposeful talk, and that means that it's directed, it's about two minutes in length, kids talking to each other, it's a win-win. We have one kid that understands a concept, explain it to a kid that may not understand it. The kid that understood it has a deeper understanding, because they have to put it in kid-friendly language to the next one, and the other kid that didn't understand it has an opportunity to learn it in a different fashion. And finally, the most important one is to write critically, and try to write critically on a daily basis. That will, in itself, will probably lift test scores and our focus of our school system and our instructional leadership. Okay. The next one I went to that caught my eye was the press to stop bullying, being the associate principal. A lot of things come off my, come across my desk, and this one kind of caught my eye. It's very simple. We look for a positive learning environment. I think we're doing a really good job in the middle school and the high school and the elementarys of creating positive learning environments for our students. We need a reporting system for student ideas, which we could probably put out a suggestion box for kids to assist us with the issues of bullying. We need to educate our students. We have to get our kids to stand up and stop being the quiet bystander, because if you're a bystander, it's still, the bullying is going on. And then we have to come up with a system to stop the so-called snitching. In other words, the kids that let us know that bullying is going on, if we intercede in something, they want, they don't want to tell us because they think they're going to be considered snitch. So we have to come up with some certain mechanisms for that. And the last thing that I got from the, that I decided to share, by the way, when I was, got the email and the guidelines for what we're going to present, I thought it said 20 to 30 minutes each. And I was ready. And Nick, last night, while we were making this shared document, goes, Dave, how much more space do you need? You know, and he's doing this little chat with me, and I said, what, you know, what are you talking about? 20 to 30 minutes? Okay. So this is my last one. So it won't be 20 to 30. On improvement teaching and learning instantly, the 10-Minute In-N-G service, which happens to be that little red book that Nick was talking about. But I want you guys to do a little audience participation activity with me, so everybody needs to stand up.
Awesome.
And you'll notice, it's Brewer night, so this has to do with baseball. So we're going to start with a wave. Everybody can wave. Good, good. Now I want you to start waving in a circle, okay, like an underhand pitcher. Softly. Now, here's the baseball card. Put your finger in a circle and keep your three fingers out. John, what is this? If we're going forward?
Three outs.
You're throwing a circle change, okay? Keep throwing that circle change. Finally, take that circle and put it on your chin.
Oh, chin.
Chin, I said chin. How many of you have it on your teeth? How many of you are going to put it on your teeth, but you're, listen. Now that's the power of students focusing on the action, not the words. So Todd Whitaker says, quit talking so much and get them doing what you want them to do. So I'm done.
Hey, Dave.
Yes?
If you want them to stand up to prevent bullying, how can they stand up and then not be accused of snitching?
That's a good question. What we've done is we've concoct stories about how we see stuff on the video machine and say, oh, I saw that you were bumped around in the hall, you were bumping somebody in the hall, what's the story with that? You know, we try to, we take statements, and we kind of try to make it so, and we're talking to these kids and their parents about, there was an incident that we need to address to leave the other student out. And some people will ask us for those kids' names, and we won't give them out at all. And, you know, we're doing what we can, but that's, that's a good question. And that's one of those things that we probably open for discussion and more research, but that's hard.
We also have the online, that's anonymous, where parents or students can report that as well.
I think it's just a wonderful thing, we talked about, one of the things was recognizing and knowledge, and it is not always the specific person that has to be addressed who's the bully, but if that person knows that others are observing and responding, which I think you're working toward, I think that's a good thing too. That's a cultural response, not just an individual response, but a cultural response.
A question for any of you who attended the conferences, seminars, in-service, whatever you want to call them, that, you know, as the board is constantly, through administrative feedback evaluating the professional development, what we're allocating time and money for, I'd like some feedback from any or all of you as far as the strategic advantage or the personal advantage that you took away from personally attending the seminars, in-services, or events as opposed to a webinar. I'm sure everybody I'm sure everybody that went to the conferences has also taken a webinar. But provide back to me and hopefully the rest of the board, you know, what you got out of personally attending that you would not have gotten out of watching a webinar. Yes, now?
Okay, well, my attention span is like this with a webinar because usually I can do other things at the same time. And so my focus isn't necessarily completely around the speaker. When you're there face to face, I think that's, for me at least, much easier to do, to get really engaged in it. One thing I would like to share when you mentioned, what does this conference do, where you were helping? You know, when we found out, when I found out that ASCD, National Convention next year, is during spring break, I was elated that I wouldn't have to miss work to go to a professional development office. Because the work that we have in our buildings day to day still goes on. We still need to manage that even though we're out of the building. And I think the resources that we can gain and bring back and build back capacity and share out with our staff. You know, Nick brought things to GLW, I brought things to U.S., but then we meet as an elementary team and we can share that with those people that did not go. You know, I presume that could be the same for, you know, the high school here as well. Things that we can talk about, much more than we have to do. But I think it's just something that being there in person is a completely different experience than just having a level of engagement and all this special.
And I think that engagement level is real, real important because, you know, I've been, like, we've been to, you know, conferences and in-services where you walk away and you've got a nice binder and you've got to throw it on a shelf and you're really not all that fired up about what you walk away with. And when we got back from this conference and other conferences I've been to, you come back with a kind of a mission, that you want to share the things that you've learned because it has such an impact on you and your own development. So I mean, I think that's one of the major differences is that you don't walk away from a webinar with that same kind of resolve to really, you know, be passionate about what you learned.
What about the informal ability after the seminar to converse with somebody who's sitting next to you or in front of you or the speaker? I guess that has to have an extreme value to, to be able to talk to somebody that you wouldn't have been able to do with a webinar.
And I know as a first-year principal, I was the elementary principal convention and I've made two or three, you know, I've met two or three other people that are first-year principals. We've already met outside, you know, I've been up by her, she's down here. I mean, there's two or three of us that have gotten together and been able to collaborate on things. And, you know, she wanted to know what we were doing in person. She, you know, I mean, and being able to talk to people in other districts. And that's a connection that I never would have made had I not gone to that conference.
Okay.
Yep, you just said what I was going to say. I've got the opportunity to sit there with people from different places around the country and having those conversations is invaluable. You know, making connections and contacts with people that, you know, I guess I could try on Twitter, but I don't really.
Well, Nick's obviously the selfie took with the book already.
We all have selfies with different people.
But you know, it's interesting, you got that opportunity because I've connected to Todd Whitaker on Twitter, which came from a conference I went to. I went to a conference and I signed up for Twitter and for six months did nothing with it and said, this is stupid, this is me emailing myself. And then finally figured out how to use it through a conference. And it has totally changed the way that I receive professional development. In my 20 years in education, it's been the most significant professional development I've done. And I think one of the things you walk away from these conferences is you're willing to step your foot in a pool that perhaps before you were. And I think that's incredibly important and empowering really as an administrator.
Again, I think I've heard a lot of things. I had an article, I'm going to forward this to everybody, not tonight, tomorrow. It was from ASCD and it was talking about evaluation of professional development. And what is it, backwards, what's the term there?
Backwards design.
Backwards design. They talk about the evaluation. They talk about, well, really you should do backwards design on the evaluation and then work back because they talk to level five, which is student learning outcomes. This is what this is all about. And I don't know if I'm going to be still on the committee of policy. We want to determine that yet. You can take over if you want. All right, okay. But we're talking about board evaluation. But I think one of the things we have to look at is what are we evaluating? And knowing that these things are occurring and they have an impact on student learning outcomes, that's what we're all about, is we need to be able to look at this and evaluate that. And so obviously this is something that we're going to address. And we're going to be looking at your feedback and how is this actually impacting our student outcomes? How can we measure that? So, because yes, a conference is great, but then what's the bottom line? It's how it impacts our students, what it does. And we'll keep going with that together.
I would also just add to that, that, you know, we are, human beings are social animals. And attending a conference of like-minded, interesting, other humans that are social cannot help but share and get excited about things. And it is that excitement that is not quantifiable, but that makes the difference, that makes the difference when you come home. And that's part of what I have heard today and also what I know from personal experience in both attending conferences as well as delivering at conferences. There's nothing like being, being excited people who are there to learn and to share.
Any further questions, the administration team? Thank you. Thanks for reporting back to us. That's very welcome. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Personnel Recommendations. We do have the approval of a reservation, provided a new board packet that's the reservation of Ruth Baker, 40% reading specialist at the Clayfield Schools. Entertaining motion for acceptance of that nomination?
Who approved, second?
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? If you're none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Reservation was approved. I'm not aware of any approval of new hires for tonight.
I'm happy.
Hopefully we'll have one on a bit. Long-term substitute position, I don't know if board members have it on your agenda or not, or the update. We are looking to place a long-term substitute in the music position for GLW and Mark Freedom, and that is Rochelle Godshell. Entertaining motion to that effect?
So, second.
Motion by Vettrow, seconded by Mearing. Any discussion? If you're none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the approval of the 2014-2015 teacher contracts, provided a new board packet as far as the teachers themselves. Entertaining motion to that effect?
So, second.
Motion by Vettrow, seconded by Riley. Any discussion? If you're none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the approval of the refusal to renew the individual contract of special education program support teacher Donna Baker. And Crystal, you can expand on why it's worded that way other than the fact that it's required.
Well, this is the final step in the two-step process that we're required to do by statute. It was a one-year position. We have since hired a school psychologist again. There was a vacancy last year and Donna Baker filled the need for us at that time. So, I'm entertaining any questions about that? She was given an opportunity to resign. She chose not to. And she is also being considered for other special education plans.
Any further discussion? And a motion asked to accept that?
Move to approve. Move to the.
Motion by Mearing to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Riley. Any further discussion? If you're none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here's to restructuring of the assessment for whom specialist position. Any further explanation?
I did email the board. It was this afternoon when we finalized the formatting. I also provided hard copies tonight for you. As you know, Ellen Wyland will be transitioning into the administrative assistant position effective July 1st. So we'd like to revise the job description in such a way that it meets some of our communication and marketing needs for the district as well as grant writing. I do think there are people out there who would love to work for the Baraboo School District and do have the qualifications with experience, professional experience in that area. And so I'm asking for an endorsement by the board that we might post this position in such a way that we can review the candidates and then come back with any recommendations to the board.
Well, why do we need a marketing person? That's project special.
Well, the job, the job description encompasses what that position currently does in terms of professional development tracking, facilitating some of those needs in the curriculum area as well as tracking our grants associated with curriculum and instruction and our federal grants as well. This is an add-on with some responsibilities for communication and marketing. I think more and more districts are recognizing the need with the mobile competitive environment that we're in now in the world of education. And everybody has a lot on their plates. And if we can bring somebody in who can fill the needs that Ellen is currently filling while provide support in that area, I think our district will be better off and in a better position.
I just got this on short angle. I'd like to put this on hold for the next meeting because I don't have a clue.
Sure, we could do that. And actually, I sent out a communication that goes into more detail. I did print that off, so we'll make sure you get a hard copy of that as well.
Just, just a clarification, this is not an additional position?
No, it's not a new one. We're restructuring Ellen's current position with, and changing the job description to include some of those responsibilities.
So again, we're not hiring, we're not adding additional costs.
No.
So this is tweaking a job description?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'll make a motion, go ahead with the post.
Second.
We can always.
Is there a pay scale attached?
No, in my communication that I provided, it would likely be around what the district administrative assistant is making, but we'd like to review the experience and qualifications before we came forward with a specific recommendation.
Is this a job Ellen's supposed to be taking?
No. No, Ellen is taking Mary's job.
So she's baking.
And Ellen's position is open and we'd like to change that position as she transitions so that we can also address some of the communication, marketing, and grant writing needs. So it would take a specific skill set and an interest for that type of position. But I, again, I do believe that there are people out there.
But until you postpart, you won't know.
No.
And I, I would say it should have a positive budget impact. I mean, open enrollment is a huge thing in our budget. And right now, I think our outs are a little bit more than our ins. So marketing could help, you know, get the word out about our district and what we're doing and hopefully get the kids coming in more than the kids going out. So I, I think it could have a financial impact on our district along with the grant writing piece of it too.
Who's doing most grant writing right now?
It's the hodgepodge of things. They're thrown together. And I guess, you know, some of it is very last minute because there's not enough time in the day to dedicate toward those things. So whether it's a news release about WKCE scores, or we want to highlight the progress on the referendum projects, or we want to highlight accomplishments in the district, we're always a few steps behind with that. And so I think, again, if we can find the skill set, and, you know, we're not talking about terminating any individual, we're talking about using this opportunity as Ellen transitions into Mary's role to, again, tweak this position in such a way that it not only meets the current needs, but it meets some of the needs that all of us have been talking about with communication.
And again, we're not adding position pressure.
Right. And, and this change wouldn't occur till July 1st.
No.
Okay, so having a motion by Mr. McNeddon, which was seconded by Mr. Vettrow. Any further discussion at board level?
And I don't know, Lori, do you want to add anything to that?
You're really stating it just well. I think it's, you know, having a vacancy in that particular role gives us an opportunity to really assess where our needs are because our needs are changing as we're evolving as a district. And it's just an opportunity to restructure your job description for that fall to meet those needs.
Further questions?
Did you say you sent out a, no more on the salary and all that?
No salary recommendation has been made, but yes, I did provide further details. I can make sure you get a hard copy of that.
I'll be down tomorrow.
Having a motion and a second, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
No, Mr. Warren, there's a name. Brings us to new business. For the approval of the receipts and disbursements of the school district of Baraboo, I turn to Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeddon. We met, we reviewed, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McNeddon, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? If you're none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Brings us to the approval of the high school ban choir trip to Chicago. We'll make a group relatively soon.
Second.
Having a motion by Mr. McNeddon, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any further discussion?
Nothing wrong with the trip or anything. And again, I just had a brief conversation with Doc. It's all over. He agreed. Is that maybe that's something we want to consider, that we have to necessarily approve each and every one of these trips? We can be informed about the trips, but if there isn't a financial consequence to the district, you think they're going to state it as a problem?
Well, that's what I said to Doug, but, you know, I want to make sure that administration and the board is fully informed about those so that if you get questions or.
Or they have extra tickets or something.
Do they need chaperones?
Right, right. It's a good trip. Well, and again, that's just something I'm bringing up briefly. I think we'll have at least a preliminary discussion to have policy to talk about this.
Is it being suggested by anybody that the request coming in the board is a burden? I mean, really, what's?
Sometimes we've had students and staff sitting in the.
I'm asking a serious question. I mean, is it?
No, I'll see it tonight.
We do, but I also think that they welcome the opportunity to talk with the board about those opportunities. And it's a good experience for the students too, to speak to the board.
That's all.
Given their policy for our trip?
Yep. We'll just remove, probably not.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren, there's.
Let's vote. This is, we can't adjourn until we vote, so let's vote.
Those in favor of the motion as presented to allow the high school ban choir trip to Chicago, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, board. Youth option fall classes, we have 22 students requesting the board approve their participation in youth options.
Isn't that phenomenal?
That's great.
I mean, that is a phenomenal number. 22 students picking up all that credit.
Now, they may not necessarily enroll in every course, but they put all their options out there so that, you know, they can select if the course is closed.
I've been looking at all those courses on their horizon. And if they just take one or two of those, I'm like, wow, that's an opportunity that was not there a few years ago when I came through.
Well, it looked like some students are taking advantage of that quite a bit. And that's very exciting that there are all of these opportunities that are being provided community-wide.
Right. And I, and I think, you know, one of the reasons for that too is a greater awareness of us out there for them and the strength, strong partnership that we have with the WK campus.
Well, we, you don't have an option to it. By law, we have to, a law that we think is ours.
But again, we do have a board policy that caps it at a certain number of credits as well.
So once they reach 18 credits, then we don't have to support them taking additional credits financially.
Is there a state statute?
Mm-hmm. The other thing I was going to share is, you know, as you review these lists, because we're going to make sure they come to you moving forward, it gives a good data point too. Because if you see that a certain course is always requested by our kids, then that should give us some feedback that maybe that should be a new course proposal for the high school moving forward.
I move to approve, by the way.
Second.
Well, you didn't have a motion.
Motion by McNeddon, seconded by Riley. The youth options request for the fall is presented. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? For item D under new business, I turn again to Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeddon, for the student insurance program.
Martha got the bids. We reviewed it. There's a renewal, keeping in exactly the same as last year. Committee moves to approve.
Who is that?
Our first agency.
That's who it was last year?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by McNeddon, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? What's the total cost?
$15,880 and others.
And that's pretty consistent with what it has been?
It's exactly the same as last year or this current.
I just need to get those 18 or something.
Maybe either your tenure locked down.
Before you beat them to death. Before you beat them to death, yeah. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carried, just to note to the board, first of all, there is a personnel committee meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
Tomorrow night?
Ooh.
Secondly.
What time? We have a four o'clock.
5:30. They're both in the same office, so you won't have to move.
Secondly, as noted on the agenda or lack thereof on the agenda, the committee assignments have not been approved by the board. I will try to discuss.
Excuse me, but that's the first meeting.
I will discuss with board members in the next week what your preferences are and noting in advance that it's always been a practice in the past, at least the past in my first years on the board, that in particular, the new members of the board, which nobody's new, but Peter and Mo are the newest members of the board, that you have not usually served on that program. So we're going to try and work through that. I'll talk to everybody individually and make sure that's okay with you. And secondly, there's going to be a couple changes in the agenda as of the next meeting. Just watch when the agenda is sent out through, you'll understand. Just inform all of the agendas present. Sleep on that.
I can't.
Got to give a cliffhanger.
And this isn't on the agenda either, but remember the main meetings are a little mixed up with Memorial Day and so fail through in the 19th.
So we can't. No. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Motion by Cummings, seconded by Mearing.
Personal.
Those in favor? Aye.
Insurance.
Those opposed?
Oh, yeah, I think that will be, yeah, well, this is.